Okay, we have none. Moving on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon, acted upon by a single action of the planning commission unless otherwise requested by the planning commissioner, member of, for a special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and enacted upon by a rule call vote. With this being said, we're going to remove, or literally, continue item 2.0C to the September 20th meeting, given that we don't have all the members that were here to vote on it. Okay, so we'll be voting on item 2.0A, item 2.0B, and 2.0D. Could we get a motion for this?
We will have to also remove 2.0D because I wasn't there.
But we do have, we have a quorum for three.
You can abstain from voting.
Abstain, okay, I will do that.
But I guess the motion would be, the first motion would be 2.0A and 2.0B.
Individually? Those two can...
Separate motion for it.
Okay.
Okay, I recommend approval of item 2.0A and 2.0B of the consent calendar.
I second it.
Chair Villeboudoir.
Yes.
Vice Chair McKinney.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tobacco.
Yes.
Okay, and then we're gonna move on to item 2.0D as an individual item. And could we get a vote for that?
I mo for approval of item 2.0D of the consent calendar.
I second it.
Chair Villeboudoir.
Yes.
Vice Chair McKinney.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tobacco.
Abstain.
Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to item 3, item 3.1. City initiated a general plan amendment. And Donna, if you could give us a briefing on this, please?
Yes, I will, thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners and planning chair. As you mentioned, this is a city-initiated general plan amendment, and it consists, whoops, it's not going. It consists of a proposed amendment to table CIRC-2 of the circulation element of the City of Riverbank General Plan. It's to amend, let's see, the amended table will achieve consistency between the adopted street standards, existing condition, planned projects, and the general plan. The proposed project involves that amendment which would specifically, A, allow right-of-ways to match the adopted street standards, B, bike lanes are added to the arterials, C, median size is increased, and D, planter strip size is increased. The proposed project is exempt from SEQA analysis under the general rule that SEQA applies only to projects that have the potential for causing significant environmental effects as specified in SEQA guidelines, section 15061B3. Okay, perfect. It still won't go to the next one. And the recommendation is to recommend to the city council that they approve amended table CIRC-2 of the Riverbank General Plan circulation element as illustrated in your staff report.
Great, thank you, Donna.
So, just to kind of encapsulate it, basically, we looked at the standards, existing streets, we looked at the general plan, and we looked at the city's street standards. This was John Anderson, planning consultants that did the work. And then they devised a more simple table, which is, would be proposed CIRC-2, and it clarifies for people, so it makes it easier for them to, the developers, to look at it and see what the requirements are, what they need to do. And instead of like establishing, say, for example, a median has to be exactly 10 feet, it gives you a range. And so that way, it covers existing mediums that might be eight foot wide, and a proposed project that might be 12 foot wide. Having that range in these tables gives you that flexibility in order to make all of these elements, not, we shouldn't say element, because this is a general plan element that we're modifying, but this is, it takes all these different aspects, like the general plan and existing standards, and allows them to be consistent with the general plan using a range of numbers rather than just one set number.
Thank you.
Is that actual, what is the range?
Well, it depends on what you're looking at. So, for example, if you look at proposed table CIRC-2, which would be attachment B to the staff report, okay, so table 1 would show an aerial, for example, as residential, 110 for a minimum and 130 for a maximum, where this range here is 194 to 126 on the proposed chart.
The amendment, the amendment to that.
The amended chart, yes.
Following, yeah.
Correct. And then, as I was reviewing this, I went to the specific plan and chose a few residential streets and looked to make sure that they were also within. So, for example, one of the arterials in the downtown specific plan talks about 102 feet to 120 feet, which fits right in the 94 to 120-foot range. So, no matter which the documents you look at, if it's the city's standards or a new development plan that gets approved, they should all be able to fit within the range of this right-of-way, or the size of the planter strip, which is, this planter strip is shown from four feet to 20 feet, where the old table shows a planter strip of just 10 feet. And so it gives the developer a lot more flexibility to be able to make that medium a little bit wider, maybe it should serve an additional purpose, like storage for rainwater, and it just makes for a better project.
What brought that up?
Well, whenever you discover that any of your documents are not consistent with the general plan, your main goal is to be consistent with that general plan, because that's what guides you.
The general plan is the longer range, what we actually had was shorter.
Correct, correct. So, we're taking these shorter-range documents to meet our longer-range document.
And just to clarify, the attachment 1 is the new, attachment 2 is the old?
No.
The vice versa?
Vice versa.
Okay.
The old is shown first, the proposed is shown second.
On the aerial, kind of reference into that, the residential was 110, max was 130?
Yes.
And then on the new, we went on the aerial, 94 to 126?
Correct. Of the arterial, I looked at those, 102 to 120. And there's, the minimum is 94 and 126 on the new chart.
On the new chart?
Yes.
Okay.
Does this have, does this affect setbacks?
Not so much setbacks, but could affect the dedicated right-of-way of the project. They may have to give more, or even in some cases, less.
And we still have room, if there's enough argument about it, that it can come up to be adjusted?
Correct, correct. We can be flexible with it.
So, it looks like there are just small changes that we've noticed.
Correct.
And again, to meet up with our general plan.
To make them consistent.
Any other further questions? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up to the public hearing, public, in this case, and we have a total of about five minutes to each person, okay?
Oh, I want to take that one.
Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Evelyn Halbert. This, it seems to me like this is taking the old one and compounding it down to a new one that's one size fits all, and Riverbank is anything but one size fits all. That's why there's three different residentials on the old one. We have different size residential, depending on what area of the city you're in. So, when you change these areas like that, and the right-of-ways and stuff, does that affect what's existing now? Now, we have a different right-of-way that is different to what we have now, so the old part has to have a different right-of-way? Is that gonna affect us? That's one of my questions.
This does not affect the old streets. There's nothing that's gonna change on them?
Not gonna change any of the right-of-ways.
No.
If the street changed, which would allow like the wider streets downtown, now they could become smaller, is that gonna give the city be able to come in there and make the streets smaller?
Say that again?
I said, when you change these right-of-ways, like downtown, we have wider streets, now we can make them, the residential is only, there's only one residential now in the new one, instead of three different ones, so now they can make them smaller than what they are downtown. Does that mean they can come and make our streets smaller as they want to? Do they notify the property owners they're making these changes?
This, the intent of this isn't to come through and change any existing streets.
But see, that's, the problem is the staff report, it doesn't tell you anything.
Right, but we discussed this on the phone, right?
So, we're addressing the future of it, not the current here, what we have on, already set up.
Correct. If, say, for example, the street next to yours is set, let's just pick a number, 80 feet, and say the city has a project coming in and they want to change it to 85 feet, they would have to work with all of the property owners to get dedications to make that street larger, or give up land to make the street smaller. It's not like we're just gonna go through and change these streets. These would all be project-focused.
That was my right-of-way question, because a lot of properties downtown don't have right-of-way.
Right.
The city doesn't have right-of-way on, so they'll just create it, but it doesn't, it won't affect us that way.
Correct, it will not. We're not coming down to change any of the streets or the right-of-ways, we're making sure that they, that the existing would fit in, within the range that we're proposing.
Okay. The other question I had is on the bottom of the staff report, where it has the attachments. I'm guessing that this is a general plan amendment being done by resolution rather than ordinance, right? They have to do it by resolution, and it shows a resolution on that attachment, on staff report? But there's no resolution there. And it seems to me if you're gonna have a public hearing and you're gonna prove this, you should have the resolution available.
We have the resolution?
Yeah.
It's not on the one online. It wasn't made available to the public. I went through that thing twice trying to find it.
We're checking right now.
Okay.
This version I have is printed out by my office this morning, and it includes the resolution.
That's the one.
So, you got one, but it wasn't online? It's not on the one online that I did?
That's the three.
It appears that it is on the website, correct?
Yes.
They added it late then. I went through it twice, it ain't there.
It all gets added as one document, as...
One, that's just the agenda, and one's that's the complete agenda with the agenda and reports. It's in there.
You printed it today, Greg, from the website?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Well, Evelyn, thank you. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing. And back to us here at the, any questions that we have for staff? Okay. See if we can move to decision this. And we want to see if we can make, anybody wants, like to make a motion on this?
I recommend approval of resolution number 2016-013, the adoption of a general plan amendment to modify table CIRC-2 of the Riverbank General Plan circulation element.
I second. Thank you.
Chair Villeboudoir.
Yes.
Vice Chair McKinney.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tobacco.
Yes.
Great, thank you. And now, we're gonna move on to item 4, the item 4.1 Planning Commission. It's an internal information only, no action to be taken here, and this is in regards to the CIP?
Yes. This was to be presented by Kathleen Klick, who wasn't able to make it tonight, but she did present the CIP to the city council at the last city council meeting. What I'd like to share with you tonight is on the first page of, after the title page of the handout that we provided. And basically, what the CIP is, a list of projects that city staff, basically, public works and recreation are working to, with it, working towards within the next five years. And it gets updated every year as money becomes available. Sometimes, they have to put projects off for a year or two. So, what you're gonna want to look at is at the top of the columns where it says 2016-17, that's the new information. And as you can see, if you look down the list, we're hoping to spend about $50,000 next year, in this fiscal year, for ADA improvements. There's money set aside, $337,500 for the signal light at Roselle and Clarabelle. So, you can see that the top few rows there are the projects that we have money for, that they're actively moving toward. And then, as you look farther down, the second half of the page, most of those projects, we don't have money for yet, so they're put off until the 2017, 2018, or 2019, 2020 years. So, as you go through this, and this is a living document, it's not set in stone, so as money becomes available, for example, I mentioned the ADA improvements, they're expecting to spend $50,000 on it this year, and that's about average what they spend every year. But both Kathleen and I worked on the CDBG grant this year to do ADA upgrades, and we've asked for $400,000. So, if that grant were to come through, you'll see that $50,000 number change, plus the numbers after it change to higher numbers. So, as money and grant opportunities come in and projects shift, you'll see changes in this document. So, basically, what it is, it's just a list of things that the city sees as priorities to be done in the next five years, the amount of funding that we've got to go with it, or kind of our dream list, what we need money for, and that just helps staff identify funding sources as they become available.
Got it. That's a good document. And staff is identifying these items, correct?
Correct. Some of it comes through the city council when we do our strategic goal-setting. They'll say, you know, they'll maybe want an overpass, or they'll want a specific trail, so staff will try to add it to this plan, and then search for the funding to go with And suggestions can be made by the public as well. They can share their suggestions with the city council, and it can be updated as well.
And then, on the following pages, are those in any order, or these are just items that are...
Well, in color, they have our streets, then the storm drain system, the sewer system, the water system, which you can see on that, that's the page that's all blue. In the 2016-17, we only have money set aside for a mobile structure building, and they really don't have any money to fund anything else.
What's a mobile structure building?
I'm not sure, that's a good question. I mean, I know it's a modular building, but I'm not sure if it's gonna be out at the water treatment plant, which would be my guess.
What is it gonna be for?
I'm thinking, where would it, I'm trying to think of where would it go?
Okay, all righty. So, $56,000 for that future project?
Correct.
All right.
And then, the different building facilities, like the second one down on the pink section, first you have the sheriff's building, then you have the community center, HVAC, and community center renovations, under 2016-17, that's blank, but we have that CDBG grant also to try to get money to upgrade the community center. So, you may see this item change in the next year if that grant is successful for us.
So, ADA routine center, does ADA fall under the first page of ADA?
No, this would be separate. The first page ADA would be streets, because we have many street corners that are not ADA compliant. So, when staff worked on the CDBG grant, we had to select neighborhoods that had low-income residents, and target those as needing the most help, as being priorities. And then, we can kind of backfill or look at other street corners as funding becomes You will see ADA opportunities for repair throughout this document, since the city did a self-evaluation and had consultants go and walk all the streets in the city and visit all the facilities to identify where we come up short with ADA. And then, this is part of the plan that helps us work toward those goals to get those repaired.
Good document.
And then, the green section is parks and recreation.
Dog park, I like that. But we're looking at 2017, 18, right?
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Awesome.
Good.
It's a good document to hang on to and refer to.
Yeah, this is one we won't shred. Okay, moving on to item 5, counter-referral correspondence information, no action, information only, no action, we have none today?
Well...
We do.
Excuse me, I've been ill for a couple of days. At the time that we sent this agenda out, we didn't have anything, but just yesterday, I received the public notice for the county's general plan update. So, they will be taking comments on their update plans in the next few weeks, or 45 days, I believe it is.
Will we receive information on that?
I can get it for you if you'd like. It's a public notice, and I'll make sure it's in your mail, and you can go to the county's website and access their full document and see what all the changes are.
This will be, oh, I mean, after we get the information from you, then we can research back.
Correct. Or you could just, you know, go research it. We actually have John Anderson looking at those changes in the county and how they will affect the City of Riverbank.
Outstanding.
So, we'll provide you with an update on that shortly.
I could email it out.
Okay, we'll email that to you.
Great, thank you. Okay, and moving on to item 6, upcoming meeting agenda items. We have item 6.1 or 6.4?
Okay. Diamond Bar West, still working toward their final subdivision map. They have a few items to clear up. They still have to complete their hog mitigation credits. We've been working with them on the oak tree replacements for our parks. They owe us some receipts from paying county fees and paying fire fees, and they're also working toward helping us acquire a well site for well 11. We have entered into an agreement with them that they can build their four model homes this late summer, fall. In fact, we're ready to issue those permits. And so, they'll get their model homes built, they'll be right on Santa Fe, so people can start looking and getting interested in anticipation of having the final map and houses being built next spring and summer.
How many houses are they putting in there?
58.
58.
At this time, there will be just the four models, though.
Right, but the 58 is what it's allotted there?
Yes.
Okay.
We're also working on their some...
East, right?
I'm sorry?
The east one?
West, west.
Oh, I jumped ahead.
Oh, yeah. I was just gonna say, we're also working with them on some innovative things on their basin. We, in general, you tend to either have gravel in there, which is unsightly, or you do landscaping, which requires a lot of maintenance on the city's part, or landscaping and lighting, or CFD contractors. And so, they, I missed the meeting yesterday, they held a meeting yesterday with our city engineer and our public works inspector to show them some innovative ideas of treating those basins that won't require, will require very little maintenance, and it won't be unsightly. So, I look forward to seeing what that looks like, and I'll share that with you.
Definitely, that sounds interesting.
And then, item 6.2 Hayes 4 Phase 1, I saw that the development agreement is all but ready to be signed, the initial study is almost done, so that will be coming before you. Once we have the development agreement, we'll bring that with the final map and the subdivision improvement agreement, get them wrapped up and moving, and get some houses built there. 6.2 Monterosso, he still needs to do his final subdivision map. He has been working with the city. If you recall, he's putting in a kind of a slanted Matthew Lane.
Yeah.
This is at Claws in California. Well, he's determined he needs a bigger basin, so Matthew Lane is gonna be straight instead of curved.
Because the basin was to the west of it, right?
That's correct. So, it needs to be a little bit bigger to accommodate the water that they anticipate from the properties. So, they're working with staff on getting that basin a little bit bigger and kind of moving the lot lines just a little bit to make sure everything works. With the Ward Villas, 6.3, they still need to come forward the final subdivision map. I haven't heard anything from the applicant who came before you at the planning commission, but I have heard that Mr. Mark Wilber has been out walking the Monterosa and the Ward Villa sites. So, maybe projects he wants to take over. I think he understands that it's gonna be a couple of years out before we have much movement as far as residential goes with Crossroads West, and so I think he'd like to be the only game in town until then, which is good news for the city, because he does build a quality product. And then, Diamond Bar East, my understanding is Mr. Wilber has that under contract and will be moving forward. They did come into city and get the as-built for the railroad crossing on Claws, because they have a requirement to upgrade the railroad crossing at Snedeker and Patterson. So, they're working on that right now.
It cuts through, right?
Yes. And utilities like railroads are some of the hardest, or longest things to get through, and so that's when he's starting to get the longest thing done first.
That's gonna be your, just, single-family detached properties, correct?
Correct. That's all he builds, is single-family detached, and he tries to really meet the needs of the neighborhood. In fact, he was talking to me the other day and said that during his planning commission meeting with you folks, somebody had mentioned that they didn't like how their neighbors always left their trash containers out, and that there should be a good place or a pad for that, and so he drove through his neighborhoods, and he's looking at putting it into his subdivisions.
Wow. That's the one that had that very narrow street, though, that court, you really couldn't park in the court, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
You couldn't park in the court, you had to park?
That's correct. The map was approved with a smaller cul-de-sac than the fire department wanted.
Yeah.
So, we had to curb the curb and paint them red with no parking. You're absolutely right.
Thank you for that insight.
You're welcome.
And moving on to item 7, new business, no information only, no action. We have item 7.1. And this is from Commissioner Stewart, addressed concerns with neglected properties throughout Riverbank and what could be done.
I'm gonna bring that up again, it's getting worse, not better.
Well, I have been working with the code enforcement officer, and I know there's letters going out, but there is a certain pattern that we have to follow, is allowing them time to do the work. One of the problems, excuse me, one of the parcels that I thought was a problem on Sierra Street, it turned out I was looking at the wrong property owner, and the guy kept saying... "I'm going out there, I'm cutting it, I'm cutting it." So we are out there, and I will provide you with an update next planning commission meeting on how many letters have gone out, how many have complied, and what we're still working to do to get the rest taken care of.
That's wonderful news, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and I jumped. I went into the other agenda, but thank you for bringing that up again. No, and I've seen some properties out there, and I've seen some motivated individuals as well, some properties that had been neglected are actually being cleaned up, which is good to see. Okay, without further ado, I think that we'll adjourn our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess.